February 2010, this a workshop, one night in discussion regarding the direct filing system for Cameron County to address issues for defendants in the criminal defense system. Presented by Kevin Sines and when Judge Nelson gets here, or Sam Candy, I think you're going to start it off. We've had committee meetings, meetings over the last several months about how to address the jail overcrowding issue that we have. And I asked Kevin along with Sam and Judge Nelson to present to the Commissioners Court where we are, what we've discussed. I think Commissioner Benavides attended at least one meeting, maybe two that I recall, and just kind of bring us up to speed as to what this commission needs to do. And really, I think what you're going to hear is it's going to take a lot of components to address this issue. It's not just Commissioners Court. Commissioners Court would be responsible for the, you know, providing the funding that's necessary for it and approving contracts and their locals. So with that, Sam, you can get started and then just kind of go through the process. We have about an hour, so, just so you know.
Somewhat brief. We've been working on the problem.
And everybody is, just, hold on, as everybody comes up, just introduce yourselves and who you're with for the record. And if anyone has any cell phones, please put them on vibrate mode or silent so it doesn't disrupt the presentation. Thank you.
Ed, Sam Smith, Assistant District Attorney, Mr. Villalobos.
We've been working on the problem, and to try to break it down real quick is, working on the problem of being able to get reports from all of the agencies, which is approximately 25 in the county, but getting the reports, being able to essentially produce a file quickly, and being able to handle defendants primarily, the big problem is handle defendants that are in our jail that do not make bond. Probably, a very conservative estimate, it would be that 50% of those people are probation cases. The object would be to get a system where the DA's office gets a report on every person who is arrested the night before electronically, so that we could review that report, make a decision, do we accept the case or do we not accept the case? Of course, if we did not accept the case, it would be turned down and that person would not be in our jail anymore. Once we accepted a case, you would like to see it get a case or cause number within a couple to three days. Then a file would be built so that within 10 to 15 days, we would be able to address that particular defendant with a unique cause number along with his defense attorney in court. And if it's a probation case, which many of the cases are there, they would get an offer of probation. The bottom line, what would it do for us? We would hope to reduce our prisoner population dramatically in a shorter time than what we presently do, which is getting cases when they finally get turned into the DA's office. We really don't address that particular person now until he is, he or she is indicted. What's that mean? It means we haven't, if you're unable to make bond, many of them are there 90 to 120 days or longer. And if it's a probation case, we'd like to be able to address that sooner because then you knock down the, I guess, seat time, which is the way the airlines refer to it, the seat time of your customers. You get a greater turnover. And what's it do for us? It allows us to operate the jail in a much more efficient manner and it allows us, bottom line, not to be shipping prisoners out of town and paying for it.
Can you give me a comparison? I know, and I've had some information, a lot of information on this, and we certainly want to hear more about it, but you mentioned the fact that it'll shorten the time. Can you give me an idea of the timeline? How much time is saved?
Oh, how mu- yes, ma'am. I would, I would, I would, again, for the people, and I guess the best thing is for me to give you a hypothetical crime. Let's say it's a possession of cocaine, less than one gram. Those cases, a first-time offender is always offered probation. I'm not talking, when I talk about reducing time spent, I'm not, probably not talking about murders or aggravated assaults. But the time difference would be, you would hope that you would reduce it
There you go.
From 90 to 120, 180 days of them sitting in our jail
Right.
Where we pay, and I'm not sure of this figure, but I think probably conservative figures, about 40 bucks a day.
Okay.
That you would reduce that group of prisoners down to 30 to 45 days.
That's what I wanted, that's specific information.
I mean, that's what you would be hoping to accomplish. And to do that, it just isn't the DA's office getting the report. There'd have to be some cooperation, one with the clerk's office, one with the judges, to set up dockets so that we could address that group of prisoners. I talked to a group in reference to, they're called Progress Communications, and I spent some time with them last night, talking to them about what they could offer us in reference to this. And I've talked to some other counties. Progress offers an architectural system, and I'm not the best to talk about, maybe technical aspect of it, but they operate an architectural system that allows other municipalities to communicate via computer with us. So essentially, what you'd be wanting to do, again, is for the policeman, when he arrests someone, whether it be the county, a deputy, or Brownsville, or Harlingen, or South Padre Island, to sit down, make their reports, and then this architectural system allows that municipality to communicate with the county, and it just pulls the information and you would get a report, again, every morning at the DA's office of everyone who was arrested that night before. Now, some of those people are going to be bonded out, and granted, that's another deal. What our biggest concern, at least in my brain, is reducing the population in the jail to, we're able to manage our jail efficiently. So, I mean, the DA's office, again, unlike we do now, which we don't do this, I go every morning to Brownsville, and we send someone every morning to the Sheriff's Department to review cases. And we do review cases with the eye of saying, no, we don't accept this, or we do accept this case, but we're not able to start building the file.
The process?
And the whole deal is, to get the information electronically to the DA's office, two people, it'd probably, it'd be two attorneys, you can't do this with, without attorneys. It has to be attorneys to review the actual case file so that we can determine to go forward.
Sam, in a case, I'm sorry. In a case like this, would the DA's office representatives be at the jail, or would you be working out of the DA's office?
No, ma'am, we would be in the DA's office. You would come in every morning, and the people who were arrested, the cases would be essentially queued up, and you would just start, that person would have to come in, and hopefully you'd break it into a felony, a felony attorney and a misdemeanor, excuse me, a misdemeanor attorney reviewing the misdemeanors. But you review every one of them, every day, with an eye toward, number one, accepting, rejecting, and then that information, once they were accepted, would have to then go to the county clerk and the district clerk and say, Mr. X is charged with possession of cocaine, and I need a felony information and case number. That's the whole, this is different than what we do. And a case number peculiar to that person and that case. So it's a little different than the way we assign case numbers now.
How is it done today?
The cases, when they eventually get to the DA's office, which I addressed is the biggest problem, it goes into, our intake now is, is really not an intake department, it's two clerks that just log cases.
Manually.
They don't review.
They're doing manual.
Yes, ma'am, they're doing it manually. But they do not review them because they're not attorneys. Once it gets logged in, then they're spread out amongst the different DAs according to where it's misdemeanor or felony, and then those have to be reviewed. Misdemeanors have to be reviewed and a, essentially, a little information sheet is done where we type up a misdemeanor information, and that misdemeanor information is carried over to, physically carried over the files to the clerk, and the clerk then assigns a number to them.
What is the period of time that you usually see a case now with the system you're using, from the time that the individual gets arrested to when it gets assigned the number at the DA's office?
Ah.
On an average?
On an average, and then I'm going to have to lump in a bunch of different municipalities because municipalities do not always do it
Operate at the same speed.
At the same speed. You're probably looking for misdemeanor, and here's the interesting thing, see, when a municipality, let's just, for instance, we can take Harlingen, where you end up, they bring the case file in paper over to the DA's office, and they bring them the misdemeanors and the felonies, whatever, it's so they may make that trip once a week to bring us files. But to answer your question, you're probably looking at average on a case, 45 to 60 days before we get it.
Jesus, God.
That's not, because again, I'm having to lump all of the jurisdictions together.
Right, but it's, it's, I thought that we had talked about that issue a while back in which
I know, we have.
Right?
We've talked it to death, David. We just
I mean, you're correct, we have, and has there been some improvement? Yes, probably some. But we've, the municipalities, the biggest problem is, is the municipalities, we're going to, again, probably have to tweak, and I think the judges would come along on this, tweak a little bit of essentially letting the municipalities put their people in our jail without furnishing what they have to have.
Sam, you mentioned in the electronic system that you're talking about that you'd have two attorneys every morning reviewing everything that came up on the computer from all the different municipalities. Are these two attorneys, attorneys that are currently reviewing the cases that come in by paper after an average of 45 to 60 days, or talking about other staff?
No, Commissioner Wood, they're not. What we presently do now is we have clerks that check in the paperwork, and then they get distributed out to the different attorneys, whether they're
Various attorneys, okay.
No, we don't do what I'm talking about right now because we don't have a system to do it. What we end up doing is, they get distributed out to all the attorneys in their caseload, and you have to just start going through them. But the biggest difference, I guess, that I am talking about is, we would accept or reject, and it's going to be a lot more accepting or rejecting, but you would accept or reject cases the day after. That decision doesn't get made until
That's assuming, that's assuming the municipality
That's what
submits electronically that report in with their prisoner.
That was going to be my concern, and I'm sure you're going to cover that, on how the coordination is going to have to be there, I think.
The system would need to be in place at all the different 25 agencies to send that information to us on a daily basis.
Correct. And the people I talked to last night, Progress is the, I'm not sure that's the company name, but that's the system I'm talking about. It is an architectural system that allows
That.
The municipality to still type their reports, if they handwrite them, we've got a problem, but if they type them in on the computer, it will allow their computer system
To transfer.
Our computer system
Yeah.
And put it in a format.
How many, how many offhand do you think continue or still write them out? Are there many?
No, no. In seven, I was writing out some reports, but I'm at their computer.
Computerized, yeah.
That's going to be the key for it to be successful.
Judge, Commissioners, it's, in the administration of justice, that's one part of it. I don't know if you remember, but I've come, talked to the Commissioners several times on this issue. With regards to the filing of the numbers and whatnot, our clerk, Jorriweda, and our district clerk, Aurora de la Garza, have been wonderful in cooperating, getting early numbers to the cases. That was an important part of the puzzle. Two years ago, we did a trial run where we had them assigned to everybody coming into the jail, and it worked. So we know we can do that part. The other part of the equation, however, is the assignment of a defense attorney, timely, the magistration, the qualification, whether or not they qualify for indigent defense, and getting the defense attorney there to work on it quickly so the case can be resolved if it is resolvable early. Now, in terms of monies that are saved, you know, the studies both on Tarrant County and El Paso County, on misdemeanors alone, reducing the time in jail up to three days saved them well over a million dollars, each county. I anticipate that because we have a smaller population, just on misdemeanors alone, we ought to be able to save half a million dollars. We're tweaking the numbers now, I mean, we're very lucky in the sense that we have, from the Task Force Indigent Defense in Austin, Texas, we have Brian Wilson who's working with us. And the, they're offering to help us in trying to work out the pre-trial office part of this problem. And that is essentially the qualification of the indigents, whether or not they are qualified for a defense attorney, if they are, the early appointment, and making sure that they get there. Now, from my own personal point of view, from my own personal point of view, what I would like to see is a website-based direct filing system. Now, what we did approximately two years ago when we implemented the fair defense local rules, the Board of Judges required that the, before somebody is accepted at the jail, that the probable cause affidavit be filed by the local arresting agencies. The real key, just to break it down to the most logical simplistic terms, is you have the arrest, then you have the charge, then you have the processing of the charge. From the arrest to the charge, there's a lot that can be done. I mean, manually, just essentially, a sample of what we're doing is what is being done in Brownsville, for example. Brownsville, one has the highest volume of arresting agencies. Well, Sam and his assistant go down to the Brownsville Police Department and work on identifying what the charges should be. And for example, we have people that are charged with misdemeanors and felonies, and sometimes it's human nature and it's part of the reality of our world that we have to deal with. You get a defendant with an attitude that pushes a police officer, whatever, they get aggravated assault on a police officer, you know, evading arrest, besides with the underlying offense, be it possession of controlled substance or whatever, besides with the underlying offenses. This overcharging, which is part of human nature, starts taking people to be in jail a longer time because, whereas the misdemeanor may be resolved early, the felony is not. If the felony is resolved early, the misdemeanor is not. So we're starting to see more and more people, and unless the district attorney gets the files electronically early, is able to identify what the charge should be, define it, charge them, put a court number on it, have pre-trial office interview them, qualify them, appoint a defense counsel, make sure defense counsel gets there early to deal with it, and try to get it resolved. On the misdemeanors and probation cases, the county's going to save just a lot of money. I wish I could quantify it for you, I cannot. I know that your auditor's office is working on it, I know that the Task Force Indigent Defense is trying to help us with it. But the important, the other, and the Task Force is willing to help us with some of the funding with regards to the pre-trial office. Now, our last evaluation showed us that we were two employees short on our pre-trial office because we had nobody covering at the weekends. We had nobody covering Catici Silas Jail during the weekends. They've offered to help fund us on that. And that, I think, is an important part of getting this administration of justice kind of sped up to where the county saves money with inmates being less time in jail, reducing the thing. The thing that I would like to see is a system whereby the pre-trial office has its component fitted into the direct filing, and we are able to transparently identify when the person's arrested, when the district attorney's office gets the information to do the charge, when the charge is filed, when he has his first appearance, when he or she pleads and gets out. That way, we're able to track where the problem is. If a judge, for example, is being slow in doing judgments, and, you know, I'm putting our own group on the line as well, being slow in getting the judgments and somebody's in jail longer for that, we'll know that. If the district attorney is not identifying the charges early, we'll know that. If the arresting agency is not bringing in what they need to, we'll know that. Now, one of the things that clearly will speed this up is if the arresting agencies have an incentive or disincentive to filing the electronic filing early. And I think that the Board of Judges are more than welc, more than willing to put in whatever requirements are so that the district attorney's office can identify the charge and make the charge early. Primarily, the person comes in, and the district attorney, the sheriff has to accept them. But if the charge is treated early and it has the information, then the district attorney can say, no, I'm not charging them. I'm exercising my prosecutorial discretion, and, you know, this is, you know, instead of a Class A or a felony, it should be a Class C and should have been done with a citation. And we're just going to issue a citation. And that's within their discretion to do. And if we get that done early, I am sure we're going to really save the county a lot of money, will speed up the administration of justice, and I think it'll be better for everybody.
Judge, what percentage of the cases that come in on a daily basis are felony versus misdemeanor on a regular basis? I don't know who's the, maybe Sam can answer.
Probably, probably misdemeanors would double your felony charges easily.
So two to one, basically?
Yes, I mean, that, I'm sure that that's probably a conservative estimate, but easily two to one misdemeanors to felonies.
Would it be within our authority, or somebody's authority, I don't know, it would be the sheriff or someone, to say, we will only accept cases electronically? I mean, because
And there's an argument right now with the Commissioners Legal Counsel and the District Attorney's Office on that. The law as it reads right now is when the arresting agency brings it over to the county jail, the sheriff has to accept them.
Right.
However, the charge is not defined by the arresting agency. What the prosecutor is willing to charge or wanting to charge is what defines what they're in there for. The initial is the arrest. If we're able to require them, and I've told Judge Coscos, and I think Commissioner Benavides and Commissioner Wood were there, and I think I've told you before, I'm willing to go to each arresting agency and meet with the city managers and tell them.
That's what it'll take.
You know, if you do not do this, we're going to send these people back to you. We're going to make it a requirement that you give us enough information electronically, follow this process, and if you do not do this, we're going to go and send them back to you. That's the incentive and disincentive.
That'll motivate them to do it.
That's the hope.
Yeah.
Well, another incentive we've come up with, in, if you have the right type of architecture here, one, they do not have to change their computer way of doing things. They just need to do it. We, and we're not going to be charging them for this architectural system either, it's just, here's the system we want to hook you to.
They just access the system?
Yeah.
They just do it, and we're able to access it.
It's kind of like checklist manifesto where you go in and, once you do the form, you just have to go through the process, right?
Right. It just takes their information out of their system and we put it in a format for us to read every morning. And there's some things that's good for the municipalities, too. With this system eventually, for instance, when you get Odyssey, when we get it online, they'll be able to share information. In other words, their police departments will be able to access the county criminal database, which they can't do right now. They, none of the municipalities can, and believe it or not, it's very, it's a nice thing for them to have. So there's another
Free. Free.
The political pressures you're going to get is that the arresting agencies are going to be telling you that on a lot of cases, they need more time to file a complete report. And I've had this argument with some of the law enforcement agencies, I don't believe it's a valid one, let me tell you why. Because they have to have the sufficient information to do the first charge when they arrest them. By putting it into the web-based system, we're standardizing everything, we're speeding up the process, that doesn't prevent the law enforcement agency from continuing to do research and supplementing it. They can do that. It doesn't stop them from that. What has happened historically, and it has varied depending on who the chief of police is, or who the sheriff is, they will arrest somebody, send them in, and say, no, we're not going to send you the file until it's complete. I remember that from being a defense attorney. When I was a defense attorney and I'd try to get involved in a case early, couldn't do it because they didn't have the file, they just had bare bones. But it does, what we, what they need to understand is, when they arrest them, the information they have at that moment should be supplied to the district attorney's office, the district attorney's office will have enough information to figure out how to charge.
To make a determination.
To make a determination.
Right.
But for example, if somebody is arrested for capital murder, and then they find out that in fact there was not a theft involved, so it should be just a simple murder, that can always be changed at a later time. It can always be changed at a later. And those kind of cases are cases that are not going to get resolved early. Those are the kind of cases that take longer to prepare. But those cases are not the ones that we're primarily looking at in terms of speeding up.
From what, Judge, from what you're saying, I'm getting the impression that perhaps these 25 agencies don't all have the same reporting forms and systems, so this would actually be able to draw information from them and provide it to you
Yes, sir.
In a singular, singular format
Yes, sir.
Where y'all could assess it. Would this also perhaps help those agencies to, at some point, maybe go into a uniform method of reporting?
Well, the ultimate goal, Commissioner, is to go paperless.
Yes.
That's the ultimate goal. And this would be getting them ready to do that.
Because if they file through this system, they don't need to follow up with paper, right?
No.
They don't have to.
You would, they would have a, their, because they're still, I mean, and we're, we're not in the position to go paperless either, so they're still going to have their hard files, but yes, the reports would just be in a different format than we get. Still the same information, plus it's the judge's problem. plus it's the judge's problem. It's still about having, oh, well, we don't have the file. You can supplement that defendant anytime you want to, and it'll go into his file. So...
Can that be done electronically also?
Yes, sir.
That's the ultimate goal.
So they just add on to that same file?
For serious cases, murder cases, there are statements that go on over a long period of time. But the premise, which is true, is if you arrest the person for whatever offense, when you arrest that person, you have to have evidence to charge. Not you can add the file, but you have to have the evidence to charge. And that's all along with that in one format, that the DA's office would not, over a period of sixty days, that the day after they're arrested, it comes in and start making a file.
Most likely, and I'm trying to try and analyze the municipalities and what they'll come back with, number one, people have trouble with change, and so you'll have to overcome that. But number two, I can't see how they can't see the advantage to it. And the other thing that they'll probably want to know is how much extra work is this going to mean for us?
Judge, from what you've...
And I think from what you've said, you'll be able to show them that it's to their advantage.
Yeah. And I think, Judge, from what you've said, one of the advantages to them is if we start sending these folks back to them, they're going to realize real quickly that it's an advantage to fit into the system.
You know, we keep talking more and more about the filing of the charges, the electronic filing, the direct filing. I just want to remind you again, that's an important part of the problem, but it's only one part. The other component is getting them evaluated, the defendants evaluated, find out whether they qualify for appointed counsel, getting appointed counsel there early, getting them to work on the case early. But for example, if we have spring break, and this is something that Mr. Smith, Mr. Vi, the district attorney, Mr. Vi Loos and I have spoken about. If you have, for example, in spring break, you have a large volume of misdemeanors or whatever, it's possible to get a group of defense attorneys that are going to be appointed to be there. It's possible to have an assistant district attorney there and get them processed. Now, the one that get processed, of course, is the first evaluation, whether or not they want to, whether it's a probation case, whether they understand that they're guilty, and they want to. Some don't want to. And if they insist on being, you know, pleading not guilty, that's their right, and, you know, we shouldn't impose anything else on them. But, I mean, I just remind you of the classical story, when I first became judge, some of the defense attorneys would say, well, I can't plead him because we don't have a lab report. I said, okay, fine. And I understand that. That's his right. But do me a favor. Don't tell me what his answer is. I don't want to know. But ask him. If he snorted it, he got high, he knows. You know, he knows what the report's going to be. And so is he going to spend thirty, forty-five, sixty days in jail waiting for the report? Or does he know, and does he accept it, and is he willing to? And I don't want to know. You know, don't tell me because it's infringing his rights, and I understand that. But some things are just common sense.
So in the tail end of the process with this particular, just from what I've heard today, if you can dispose of some of these cases earlier rather than later, which is what occurred now in your process, and I'm just looking at your process, you know, that is going to hopefully relieve the workload for a bunch of folks that normally is having to be spread out over a number of people.
It would, you would hope that instead of ninety-eight percent of all cases, felony cases, going to the grand jury, you hope you're going to knock it down on felony informations at least fifty-seven.
Fifty, yeah.
Yes.
So there's a tail end effect.
There's sort of savings that you don't have to deal with in the, with the grand jury also. Actually, the biggest portion is that you have two district attorneys that are reviewing every case in what's called a true intact department. In other words, they've got to review every day. That's their job. It's not to just review everything, but once you review and start making the files, there's a lot of things in it. But it's the early attacking of the problem, which we don't do right now because we haven't been set up to do it.
Now, we do have, from the task force on indigent defense, we have Brian Wilson here who's here, who's got just a short presentation of the commissioners at that time. Go for it.
Hello.
I'm Brian Wilson with the task force on indigent defense. I'm the grant administrator. The task force, you know, has a lot of investment here. We've shown with our cash how much we care about Cameron County. And I applaud you all for taking on an integrated approach because that's, the systems that are working more efficiently in Texas are clearly ones that have taken on the whole thing. It's hard. It's a lot harder that way than piecemeal. But I can share with you that, you know, we do have our grant cycle open right now. I've written a little concept paper that Judge Nelson asked me to provide that shows what are the indigent defense components of that. And there's a system in Tarrant County that Jim Bethke, the director of the task force, as well as the Timothy Cole Advisory Council, went and looked at this week. And he told me to tell you all, take the time to look at that system. Because from beginning to end, we funded about $350,000 of that system, I want to say about four years ago. And while much of the system is available for sale, the pieces that we funded anywhere in the state are available to Cameron County at no cost because that's one of our requirements when the people develop, counties develop software with our program. But we started with that front-end piece that Judge Nelson was talking about, appointment of counsel, date and time of arrest, determination of indigency. Don't forget that, you know, y'all are looking at cost, but also, when you have a good system, an integrated approach, you can begin to see, does everybody who's qualifying for attorney really, are they really supposed to be getting? That's another cost factor. And when you have an office like Kevin's and Hidalgo has put in, you do that front-end evaluation. So I didn't have an official presentation, but I did want to say that I applaud you for looking at this front to back, you know, front to end. We can, if y'all had subject matter experts from other counties that you want to bring in, you can always come to us for technical assistance or technical support grants. I know you've had one in the past, Jail Strike Force, I believe, where we helped y'all deal, do appointment of counsel on front end at a kind of a, I think it was about a hundred thousand dollars to help y'all lift your appointment of counsel, to get people out of jail right away. So those kind of things. But you can, you know, hire a national expert and come to us and write a grant. That's any time of year. That's not as tied to a grant cycle. So anything that we can do to help you look at this integrated approach. But like Judge Nelson said, in, just in El Paso, the sheriff was on the electronic filing, the police department, I mean, like, the police department was on it, the sheriff wasn't. Their savings was about $1 million between those, just on misdemeanors, on those cases. So those are the kind of systems you've got. Harris is a pretty good example of direct filing system that's doing that early review. Tarrant's doing that early review. El Paso's doing the early review. And it's turning into a lot of jail savings. And there's other factors that tie in, like indigence, determination, appointment of counsel, moving those cases, less time on the, you know, on the appointment. If the DA is fully informed as to what the charges are and the nature of the offense, they can pass that on in discovery and figure out which cases can be brought out of jail very quick. Thank you for your time. We're here to offer support in any way we can.
Thank you for being here.
Did you say your grant period is, there's no cutoff dates or deadlines?
No, the grant, the grant that I just sent Judge Coscos, what we call the discretionary grant, and I know I've sent letters to all the judges, that is the intent to submit application is February 26th. And that's kind of our big pool of money. We do it once a year.
Right.
Then what I was saying is we have what's called technical support, which y'all have, I think you've had at least two of those so far. And those are out-of-cycle grants where you identify a problem, or you want to research out an issue, or you want to bring in a national expert to do some sort of evaluation, or in this case, you know, to work with, it might be a national prosecutor expert to work on direct filing. We don't think we're limited, but what we're really trying to do is promote improved indigent defense systems. And that, although those are typically, I think Cameron County's one for a hundred thousand, probably the largest we've ever done. Most of those are about five to 10,000. We've done, I think, maybe a 25 to 30, to bring somebody in to work with the county to research out. The criteria for that technical support is that you must raise the knowledge of indigent defense processes in Texas. So somebody can come and look at what y'all did and go apply it to Hidalgo or wherever Smith County is. Okay?
Thank you.
Very good.
Commissioner, I want you to understand that we're trying to get this done, but it's not a matter of spending the taxpayers' money without really having a good conscience or trying to get resources. We've been working with the task force and gotten resources for the county. We'll continue to do that. And there's an opportunity that arose recently when Sheriff Lucio has a contract coming up on the pay funds. And there was an issue as to whether or not, as an incentive to continue Securus providing that, as an incentive to the county, whether or not they would help provide the software. So it would be a possibility of a funding. Now, that frankly is a business decision that is the commissioner's court's decision. It's not my decision, you know, and I'm not getting involved in that part. I'm involved in trying to make sure that we speed up the administration of justice. But we do have folks from Securus who are here to talk to you on that. We're going to be meeting on that today, this afternoon. And when the workshop got put up early, we wanted to take advantage. So they're here, and they would like to address you. I'm going to apologize to you all. I have to go back and go to the court right now. So I'm going to leave you. But if you would just give them a little bit of time, I really appreciate it. That's the business part of it.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. And Kevin and I have spoken frequently on this, and, you know, it's going to take a lot of components to get this done. So one of the questions that will come up before we adjourn the workshop is procedurally, where do we go from here? How do we make this happen? We met last week, okay, early last week, and they came up with a possible proposal to us where it would significantly save a lot of money. So why don't you explain what you all can do, and just take it from there and open up for questions as well?
Yes. Thank you, Judge. Hi, my name's Rudy Pena. I'm the account executive for Securus Technologies. We are the current inmate phone service provider, as Judge Nelson mentioned. We have been in partnership for over five years with Cameron County directly. Prior to that, we were in partnership with SBC Tenetics with Cameron County, providing inmate telephone service. What started all this at the sheriff's office is the expansion of 356 beds that you guys are adding on. We walked through the facility, put a sheriff's request to see what it would take to run the wire and set up the platform to extend our service over to 365 beds. And speaking with the sheriff, through conversations, he asked me, he goes, Rudy, he goes, we have an issue on the other side of the fence to where we want to go. The Judge Nelson, Sam, Kevin, so they're looking to speed up the process for the inmates and so forth, to get them released. And he asked me if we had a solution that might fit in Cameron County's need. He asked us to meet with Judge Nelson, Sam, and Kevin to discuss the avenues, which we did last week. In saying all that, we do have a solution that might fit the needs of Cameron County to where we could get creative to assist in funding that application. Doug Simpson, our vice president, says is here. And then the gentleman here will do a small fifteen-minute presentation, how the process works, kind of talk you through, show you exactly how that works, and speak to it and answer any taken questions the court might have. Okay?
Proceed.
I'd like to introduce Joe Heaney, Director of Development.
Hi, my name is Joe Heaney. I'm Director of Development for Arconic Systems. And I'm going to show you what we have already for direct electronic filing. Our CEO, Sanjay Singhvi, wanted to be here to make this presentation. He considers Cameron County very important and this system very important, but he had a prior commitment and couldn't make it. So he actually has a letter of apology to each commissioner that we'll leave for you before the day is over. Basically, what I'm going to do today is I'll talk about briefly the company, very briefly, and the elements of electronic filing and the process involved in getting there. Arconic System has been in the public safety business for over 20 years. We develop real-time information sharing systems between agencies. So basically, anyone who wants to share data, we connect with their systems, and then everyone in the region can share the data and look things up. It's actually very important in law enforcement for sharing data because you can go in and look what other people are doing. The reason we started in this business was there was a rapist in Virginia, a serial rapist, who was going from jurisdiction to jurisdiction raping young girls. And they couldn't catch him because nobody knew what was going on in the other jurisdictions. So the FBI got involved and wanted a central repository of data so that they could track this type of case. And we developed that system for them. Our software was also used, if you remember the DC Sniper, our software was used to help track that down and prosecute them. And I'm going a little bit fast because we have a short time, but basically, I'll go through the vision of our system and the technology behind it, and the infrastructure needed and the process to make it work. We have different levels for getting information started for the electronic filing. It's actually possible to start the electronic filing right at the time of arrest. So as soon as the arrest is done, information can be entered into the system, and it can be sent to the district attorney's office immediately. We also can do information entry at first setting or first appearance in the court. Also, we can do it at booking and release within the jail system. For the courts, we also have basically a feedback system. So if the court or the district attorney decides to dismiss a case or not pursue a case, that information can be sent to the jail immediately, and they can start the release process. And our whole system is based on real-time information. So as soon as something is entered in the system, we can send it to the appropriate place immediately. You don't have to wait a day or two days. It's immediate. Basically, our system is a paperless system. So you file incident reports, arrest reports, supplementary reports, everything you've got can be filed paperlessly, and we store it in the system. It's possible to print a copy of it out, and it looks exactly like the form would have looked like if you had written it on a piece of paper. Real-time information is available to everybody. And this, like I said, is one of the big benefits of our system is that once the data's in the system, everybody in the area who has access can use that information for investigative purposes. We have an optimized workflow system where, as the data is entered into the system, we know immediately, based on predefined settings, who's supposed to get that. So we know that an incident report should go to the district attorney. We know an arrest report should go to the district attorney and to the jail. So once the jail gets the person in to be booked, we can take all the information from the arrest report and already put it into the system for them. So there's information sharing like that that happens all over, based on our workflow process. The system has a lot of cost and time savings. Obviously, you can get information from one place to another by a computer instantaneously. You don't have to send paper. You don't have to have a courier bring paper anywhere. So it's very efficient. And basically, you end up with different agencies acting in unity. Because as soon as one agency enters data, the district attorney can see it, and they know what each other is doing. Okay, the technology behind it, everything is secure. You always hear us talk about secure because you don't want this information being leaked, modified, changed, or tampered with in any way. So we have secure transmission methods to get data from one agency or municipality to the district attorney's office. Data housing, we have... Data housing, we have various ways of housing the data. For the most part, we leave the data with the original agency. We do not take their data and put it somewhere else. That way, they can feel secure in the fact that they're managing their data. We do have, for the district attorney to add on to a case, they have their own copy of everything that they're working with. Our system is web-based, it's so that we can have people get on a computer in any jurisdiction and use the web to enter their data. The screen looks just like the paper form they would have entered the data on. So they fill it out on the screen and if they want to, they can print a copy of the paper form. Our system also is based on various standards, the main one being the GJ XML, which is the Criminal Justice Global Data Sharing Standards. And we use that, and with that, we can actually interface with other systems. So we don't require you to do double entry. You don't have to enter something in the local municipality system and then our system. If you enter it into the local municipality system, we can extract that data from their system and get it into our process. Everything is tamper-proof. We actually have a technology called Digit Seal, which is approved by Attorney General in several states already, that basically will notify you if the data has changed after it was sealed. We have, in the system, everything is defined as a case, so we have a case jacket, which is what the district attorney would work with, where you can see the incident reports, supplemental reports, videos, audios, crime scene photos, everything involved in the case that can be entered into the system, the district attorney has access to.
Everything entered by the municipalities?
Everything entered by the municipalities or added to by the district attorney. So if the district attorney gets information after the fact, he can add that to the case. So we have all the paper, instead of using paper, we can convert it into a portable document file, a PDF file, which is viewable but not changeable, and they're sealed with our Digit Seal technology. I already talked about the workflow and how it's configurable so we can send the paperwork everywhere it needs to go simultaneously. We have real-time notifications, so you could every morning come in and get a list of everything that happened the next day. It's also possible, if you want to set it up, that as each case is entered by a municipality, you could get notified immediately that there's a new case. Or maybe you're not concerned about misdemeanors, but you're concerned about class-one felonies. Every time a class-one felony came in, you could be notified there was a new class-one felony. So you can get on the cases much faster. And then secure messaging, if you want to communicate with the municipalities, instead of just using email, which can be hacked and is open, we have secure messaging that we can use to send messages back and forth. The infrastructure, we work with wired networks, just plug a wire into your computer. We have wireless networks, so we can actually police cars with mobile data terminals, they can enter data in their MDTs and have that entered into our system. We have security systems, we have authentication systems, all designed around the fact that we're trying to make sure that only authorized people have access to this data. And then, of course, you have to have training, so the training can be at various levels to make sure that everyone knows how the system works and what benefits they can get out of it. And then, as was discussed before, we can actually standardize forms. So each municipality could enter data in a form that looks like their paper form, but the district attorney's office would see everything in one single format. And it's also possible, if you wanted to, we could standardize forms across the counties so that every municipality used the same forms. Process, leadership, that's pretty much what we're talking about here today. Someone has to want this to happen and guide the process. And that has to be somebody within the county who is willing to make sure this happens. And there's lots of benefits to it, so it's usually not difficult to find someone who's willing to help. Cooperation of different agencies, obviously, they have to be willing to enter their data and share their data with the county. Integration, this was touched on a little bit earlier too. We will let you enter data in any system you want, it does not have to be our system, and we'll integrate with that vendor's system and retrieve the data into our system. And then, you know, small and tangible steps. This is a big undertaking, all the electronic filing, and if you want to take it to the point where you go completely paperless, there's a lot of work and a lot of change involved. And so we'll help you creating small tangible steps where you can actually make progress fairly quickly but not overwhelm people with change.
So then you're, if I'm understanding correctly, your last statement, it would be in phases? This would be implemented in phases?
It could be, it can be in whatever format we would like to do, we'll set that, it could be in phases or it can be just continual. You can start with, the district attorney's most important things would be an incident form, an arrest form, basically the forms that define a case, the probable cause. You could start with that. And then, once everyone was comfortable doing that, you could have another phase where you did several more forms, or you could just start adding more forms continuously as you bring more paperwork into the process.
How does this integrate with the overall system that we're looking at, like the Odyssey system?
Okay, because of the way we design our system, we have an architecture where we kind of have the overall process, and then we have integration. We have standards that we can use to integrate with the other systems and share data with them. So we would not, we would not take everything from Odyssey, but as information was needed from Odyssey, we could get it. Same with other municipalities that already have software systems in place, as information is needed, we can retrieve it. So...
Can the other systems retrieve information from this system? If they're authorized?
If they're authorized and the other vendor, we wanted to do that, yes, they could. So we also provide web access.
I mean, you wouldn't consider the information, proprietary information, to that software where you'd have to go and do another whole agreement with the other system that we're looking at utilizing for this process?
No, we keep our system as open as possible. It's all about data sharing, and so that's what we would do, is share data.
I have the same concern that Commissioner Garcia has. We have been working with Tyler Technologies to be able to integrate all the departments, the DA, the sheriff, the court system. And so at this point, I know that Tyler Technologies and our computer department have been working with the DA's office already and with the sheriff's department to try and bring this, you know, and to go live and whatnot. So I don't know at this point where we're going to be at. I guess we'd have to sit down and look at it more thoroughly.
Right.
Maybe the IT committee could meet and, I mean, ultimately, it's this, it's this court that will make a decision. So that's my only question.
Right, and we provide all the electronic filing and the workflow management of that, the filing, the paperwork that gets filed. And then, like I said, we maintain that data and we can share that data with the other systems, and that's kind of how we fit in, is we can share everything between the systems.
Because even in a very much smaller scale, we've had situations where, you know, in the software systems that are being utilized in JP offices, for example, you know, and we have an agenda item today, you know, there's, there's, there's this non-shared thing that occurs.
Right.
Because you're using this system and we have this system, we got to buy this software, and we have to buy this other software, and, you know, you can't, the information is not as web-based transparent or whatever the terminology is.
Right.
So that it can easily be used by all, you know?
Yeah, we've run into that in various places, that people consider their system and their data proprietary, and you usually end up having to have to pay them to integrate or do something with them to get the integration done. But our system is designed, that's what we do, is we integrate with other systems to share the data.
So what I'm hearing then is that your system will integrate with any platform that we currently have?
Providing there's cooperation.
Well, yeah, but it's assumed for a moment that there shall be cooperation.
Yes.
How is this, your system comparable to what is being utilized in the other counties that were mentioned, such as Tarrant, Harris, El Paso County?
I'm not completely familiar with what they do. It is similar to this, where they do electronic filing, and I'm not sure to what extent they take it and how they manage the data. Our system usually, when we run into other systems that are similar, is unique because we do the data sharing. It's not just electronic filing. You don't just enter the paperwork, it goes to the district attorney, they review it, they take action on it, and it's over. We actually have the data there, it can be used for investigative purposes, it can be used for anything that the other law enforcement agencies need it for. They can do searches, they could look up my name and see if I was ever arrested in any other agency in the county.
How many systems do you have in place working right now in Texas? Really anywhere, I guess, that's comparable to this?
I'm sorry, I'm not in sales, I don't know the number. I know we have systems in Virginia, New Jersey, North Dakota, Nebraska, various other states. We've got at least six or seven states where we've got systems like this.
And they'd be willing to provide references?
Oh, yes.
When asked, okay. Commissioner Tamayo vaguely kind of talked about timeframe. If we needed to do something, when would this project be completed? Give me a timeframe, not so much a date, but in terms of 60 days, 90 days, whatever the timeframe would be.
Sure. The commitment, if I may, Sanjay's CEO has been down here a couple of times himself.
I'm sorry?
Sanjay, the CEO, has been down here a couple of times, done some research. His commitment, should we come to terms with Cameron County, was to implement, get this process started within 60 days. Of course, not totally turnkey because it takes time to acclimate different departments, but his commitment was 60 days, Judge, to get this started. And if I may say, I did speak with Tarrant County, they're also a customer of ours, and Sam might be able to speak to us better than I can, but I spoke to them and I spoke to Progress, the company who developed it for them, their process has been five years, and they're still building on to cater to what Tarrant County's needs are. From my perspective, Judge, and you and I spoke about it a little bit last week, I look at this as an opportunity for Cameron County to consider a software development, cutting-edge software development edge company that is willing to work with Cameron County from the ground floor and build it up as you guys need it and as different departments get adjusted to the change of the leadership that was spoken about by Judge Nelson. And on a side note of that, may I say that we provide service for Chief Guards at the Police Department. We have Hidalgo County all the way up to Webb County, just on the border, which is where we're taking this up the road. So it's about sharing data is what we envision going to, Judge.
Okay, so then let me go back to us, ask if you can just go, procedurally, where do we go from here? Now that we've had the presentation, what is it that you would need? We can't take, we cannot take action today, but we need to move on this, because every day that this goes by, it's costing us more and more money in terms of having to house inmates somewhere else. So procedurally, what is it that you need from us? And who can answer that question? Would it be Kevin?
Mr. Ford. I think I suggest that we meet perhaps next commissioner's meeting. Give us a couple of weeks to get with this company, with Sam, and it's really up to the DA. They're the ones going to call the shot on any system. If it doesn't work for them, it doesn't work for anybody.
Well, Commissioner Van Avila's mentioned the IT committee, and I think it'd be important to, if you can, while y'all are here, to save yourself a trip and they can kind of convene an IT committee real quick, sometime, maybe this afternoon or, you know, whatever y'all's schedule permits, and just kind of go over it with them, because this has to be all-inclusive. And I think when we spoke this morning, there's so many components in order to make this work that if one component decides it does not want to cooperate, then it jeopardizes this whole system. Everything, I see the district clerk folks are here, but, you know, Cameron County, the commissioner's court, the sheriff, the DA, the county clerk, everybody needs to be on board with this, and the more information they receive early on, the easier it's going to be for them to, you know, to sign up and come on board with this. So I'm going to leave it to you, Kevin, for now, to convey, you know, to convene whatever necessary meetings you need to have with the other commissioners or with the ID department or whomever you need to sit down and visit so we can bring this. Now, you've got a February 26 deadline on that application, so you need to tell me what you want and need to do and what you would like for the commissioner's court to do. So get that as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Is there anything else that somebody else would like to participate in? Martha? You want, I know, we've talked briefly, I've asked, you know, this may have a cost number associated with it, we don't know just yet. I've asked Martha to tell me as best as she could what the backend savings would be that would offset the front-end savings, so this would be as much of a budget-neutral deal.
Basically, what I started working on was, I looked at the list of inmates being detained, which is the daily report that the jail has available, and between Kevin and myself, there was, there's a stack of papers about so thick, okay? And it was just a matter of taking one or two pages and isolating, and I just wanted to take a look at it from a perspective of, I want to identify about 10 inmates that are currently incarcerated that, from what we can look at, that they should have already been released or their case should have been resolved. And so 10 inmates were identified, they've been housed for a total of 1,599 days, and based on...
Each or all?
Total, total. This is a total, okay? Based on the, for 10 inmates. This is based on an analysis that, you know, Kevin and his staff looked at yesterday. Their normal incarceration date, based on the charges or the pending charges or the lack of charges that have been incurred, their normal incarceration date should have been 660 days. So we're looking at 10 inmates being housed in excess of 939 days. Yeah, it's, we're housing, we're paying, we're paying two detention facilities, $40 a day per inmate, and another facility, we're paying $48 a day where we're sending our inmates out. If you compute those days times that cost, you have a cost averaging from $37,000 to $45,000 on 10 inmates alone. I, you know, it would not be moved to sit down and compute the whole list, it would be very time-consuming, but I feel confident that just by identifying 10 inmates at this point, that there is a substantial savings and a substantial cost that is being incurred to the county that can be alleviated.
Did you pick those individually for any particular reason or did you just randomly?
They were picked out based on the number of days that they had been incarcerated.
Okay, so you picked up the ones that have been there the longest?
And ones that we could identify that should have had their case resolved.
There's actually 92 pages of a jail dock, not a docket, but the amount of people in jail, 92 pages worth. And we just picked out a few on the first page and second page that just really stuck out of this. And we go through that whole thing. That's an enormous amount of money that we wasted.
Make sure you all speak, go ahead and speak into the mic. Make sure you speak into the mic.
Those documents are available to anybody that wants them on the Eagle, by days in jail, by charges, whatever, by alphabetical order. They're available to every court, they're available to anyone that wants them, to the auditor on the Eagle system. So we can track that. I mean, it's not, it's not like hard to go out and find those numbers, they're there, and you can track which courts, which ones haven't been indicted, which ones have, and who's been in jail the longest. So that information has always been there for your information.
Martha, I'm going to ask you, and I know it would be difficult to really make any type of informed answer to this, but if Kevin and Martha looked at two pages and found 10 people, on the other 89 pages, do you think you would have similar type of...
By all means, as Mr. Smith was saying, you know, you have an agency that'll turn in enough paperwork just to get by, just to follow the state of Texas rules that the sheriff has to take, you know, take the inmate. But yet again, it might take them a couple of months to get all the other information in there, and until that, all that information's there, he's not going to be in, you know, go see, his case is not going to go before the grand jury or it's not going to be ready. So someone could be in jail for 120 days, and then the information comes in, then he's indicted, then they'll send him to court for the, you know, first court motion, and then the process starts from there, and it may be up to 300 days, you know, for the whole
process takes and he gets sentenced and/or released or put on probation, what have you.
Are there generally going to be inmates that need representation under the indigent rules or, no, they need an attorney appointed to them because of indigent?
Every case is different. It could be, like you said, different municipalities, real hondo, you know, somebody doesn't get the information in on time and it, it's just a slow, slow process. It's a manual process and I'd be glad to provide you all with a copy of a list so you can just take and look randomly. And everything's there, the charges, if he is indicted, the cause number will be there. If he's not indicted, the cause number won't be there and you can look at the number of days. You can say, okay, this is 90 days. How come there's not a case number there? Which means that person still hasn't been through the process yet.
I think the commissioner wouldn't answer. I think your question was, are the people in jail probably going to be indigent?
Yeah.
And that's going to be yes.
Sure. Because I would think if they had an attorney of their own, the attorney would be pushing things to get them out as soon as possible on bond or something.
And if you're on bond, I mean, truthfully, if you're on bond, you don't care where the case goes.
Yeah.
You don't. I mean, it's more beneficial to your client that the case doesn't come in.
Sure.
So if you're on bond, it's a different story, but yeah, you're answering the question, probably 95% of the people in jail are indigent.
And the majority of those do have a court-appointed attorney. And for most misdemeanors, the attorney can file a writ of habeas corpus for a PR bond if that case hasn't come in, 90 days on a felony. But the problem we have, and there's a bunch of problems in the system, is if we do release them, we get a lot of FTA's in our courts, failure to appear.
Yeah.
So this is another sort of cure-all for a lot of problems. If we catch them up front, we move the cases quickly, dispose of those cases quickly, we won't have a lot of different problems. It's a good cure-all.
Okay, so again, Kevin, in two weeks, I may be back from out of town on that day unless we can push the meeting to Friday morning, but rather than Thursday. Will that give you enough time to come to the court with a recommendation? And is that what this commissioner's court wants to do with the following meeting?
As quickly as possible.
Make sure that...
Does that allow you enough time?
Well, as part of that, I mean, you need to include the auditor, the purchasing department to make sure that whatever it is that you're recommending follows our procurement and make sure we're okay with all that. But again, Judge Nelson was eloquent stating that, you know, we've discussed this many, many times and we need to move.
Yes, sir.
You know, so it's going to cost a little bit, but I think what Martha told us, we're going to save significant amount of monies at the backend. We may have to spend a little bit on the frontend, but I think that if we work something out with these folks that are providing a service now for us, I think you're going to find that our out-of-pocket costs may be minimal, if that, okay?
If they wish to continue providing the service?
Correct. Someone is speaking. Yeah, I mean...
Definitely.
We'll bring everybody together.
You know, Kevin knows the components that we need. You know the components. We talked about it this morning, but you sound from the district clerk, the county clerk, the sheriff, IT, auditor, budget officer.
DA.
From the DA's office.
And the only reason we hadn't really done that is because this was our initial meeting with the commissioners, initial workshop, and just to get your class and now we're ready to go.
And start working with the municipalities, as Judge Nelson has indicated, once we begin this process and let's move forward with it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Kevin, thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you again. And I look to, Sam, I told you in the very first meeting we had, I'm kind of looking to you to help speak. I know, I know.
We'll get it, yeah.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
And we're looking to Brian over there, too.
And Brian, former Beach Boy team member. Do I hear motion to adjourn the workshop?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. One in favor, so now by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. We will start a regular meeting now, the fourth day of February. It's 2:00 in 2010. It's now approximately 9:50. As we all do all meetings, we will start with an invocation. If no one is here to do that, then I'd ask everybody rise and recognize a moment of silence for some individuals that passed away. A member of our county treasurer's office, Dora Corona's mother, passed away and also a great public servant and his daughter, Dr. Jo Salvaletta, and his daughter Gina passed away this past week as well. Thank you. With that, I'd like to ask Brian to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey. To discuss the following items. Contract with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel regarding contract issues with Costa Rica Food and Spirits, Inc. for Costa Rica Food and Spirits concession in Andy Bree Park pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning the concession agreement with South Padre and Water Park Limited pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item C, Confirmed Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Dora Torres, Santos Torres, Sofia Torres, Leandro Torres Jr. individually and on behalf of the estate of Leandro Vasquez Torres, deceased, versus Omar Lucio in his individual and official capacities, Mike Leonard in his individual capacity, Dean Garza in his individual capacity, Josefina Romero in her individual capacity, Cameron County, Texas, and unnamed employees of the Cameron County Sheriff's Department in their individual capacities in the United States District Court, Southern District of Texas, Civil Action Number 09-CV-83, for authority to hire experts pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A. Lastly, consultation with attorney concerning pending litigation in Cameron County Attorney versus Richard Burst and others, Cause Number 2009-12-6895-H in the 444th District Court of Cameron County, Texas, pursuant to Code Section 551.071 and 551.129. Consultation with attorney. Commissioner, that Commissioner Wood, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Benavides, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item A, Confirmed Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel regarding contract issues with Costa Rica Food Spirits. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of Mr. Manders and counsel? So moved by Commissioner Wood.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning the concession agreement with South Padre and Water Park. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of our county administrator?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item C, Confirmed Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Dora Torres and others versus Omar Lucio and others. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel and proceed along the terms and conditions and discuss and authorize the hiring of experts as needed?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wood. Seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item D, consultation with attorney concerning pending litigation in Cameron County Attorney versus Richard Burst. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of our counsel?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa. Seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Public comments? Anybody sign up for public comments? No? Okay. Item 4A, I've been asked, Ms. Salagoyas, she will not be attending today. We're going to postpone this for another time. Do I hear motion to table item A?
So moved.
By Commissioner Wood. Seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item B, Presentation by Cameron County Complete Count Committee on 2010 Census Awareness Campaign. Frank? Okay, I guess that's... Dr. Z? Welcome.
Thank you all very much, Judge and Commissioners. You have, Frank was here earlier and he placed a packet in front of you and so we're going to use a low-tech method this morning. I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate you bringing me into this magnificent facility and I congratulate you and I'm sitting out here and I'm recalling when I was about 10 and my father took me to see, or into the county judge's office and to Judge Dancy's office. My aunt was actually his longtime secretary and I was just since then out there having flashbacks of that event. I appreciate the fact that you have entrusted to me the co-chairmanship of our Cameron County Complete Count Committee for the 2010 census. And my role today is to give you, provide you an overview. We have not been before you yet, but we wanted you to be sure that we've been active in that role and we feel very confident about what we have done, what we plan to do, and most importantly, answer any questions you might have. So, that being said, if you follow with your packet, and I know you have a long agenda and I'll be as brief as I can, I want to, and I don't know if any of these members are here today, but Rosa Velartes, Gabino Sotelo, Maria Lourdes Saucera, and Gloria Moreno are the other committee members on this committee with me, along with your county planning person, Frank Becarano, a longtime friend, and Julian Peña from the actual Census Bureau facilitates us from time to time. And a number of other, you have a second page there that lists a number, I don't go through them all, of the community persons associated with outreach and many community organizations who assist us. Let me tell you that the role of the, we cannot, I cannot tell you how important the role of this committee is in our county because it translates the failure of our county, which of course will not occur, in counting its population impacts us for a decade, minimum, in some cases more. And you see in that role of Complete Count Committee that, and we've had a number of decennial censuses, probably going back to the '70, '80, '90, 2000 census in which Cameron County has historically been undercounted. This impacts us when redistricting takes place and when congressional districts are realigned as they will once again in the future. But more importantly, it takes revenues out, an undercount of the county takes revenues right out of your budget. And so it could be, and this is an estimate early, but if you consider the 2000 census report of the population in Cameron County of approximately 335,000 students, excuse me, students.
People.
Wow, you can tell by look.
That's the environment.
Persons, citizens.
We're all students.
Right, we're all students. Thank you for that. And if you consider that the undercount for Cameron County was estimated between 7% and 10%, and we consider about $100 per person per year, that means over the course of a decade, that's a loss to the county of $35 million. I mean, that's a mind-boggling, staggering amount. And while that's only an estimate, I emphasize, it is an awful lot of money. Also, Cameron County, as a South Texas county, as a border county, fits into a category of quote-unquote "difficult to count" and that's for many reasons that are obvious to us. I mean, we have a large population of transitional, I'm being kind here, okay? Transitional people who are moving from 1.8 to 1.8 to 1.8, and that's characteristic of our county and it's always been that way. The census is not a count of citizens. The census is a count of people who reside in the county on the day that the census is taken, which is, which historically is April 1st. And so April 1st, 2010 will be census day. And so in Cameron County, and if you look over, well, you have a map in there, but you know, I don't have to tell you, that in Cameron County, we have at least 100 colonias still to this day. Some have been around a long time, some are springing up right now. And it's estimated that in those 100 colonias, which represent every nook and cranny in the rural areas of the county, we're talking about somewhere between 20 and 30,000 people represented who live in those counties, in those colonias. And these are folks who, for the most part, unlike us, do not have addresses. And because they don't have an address, a street address, I live at 1608 West Levy, you know? County Judge Costco's is my neighbor right down the street. I mean, we have addresses. But people who live in colonias are marginalized in terms of their addresses and therefore our ability to count them. And unless the census is ready to stand up and help us identify those folks, they're not going to be counted. I can tell you that in the year 2000, they were not counted. And we fought with those people, we fought with those people, and finally, they were not counted and it cost us money. Now, let me give you an overview of some of our milestones. Your committee, and once again, I thank you for this opportunity. I've personally been involved in census since 1960. I had an aunt who was, remember, census was enumerated and the census would come and knock on your door and come into your living room and fill out the form. And I had an aunt who did that and I would, at about 10 years of age, I would go around with her. Probably a little older than that. Go around with her. And then in '70, I was a graduate student, involved in census, and '80 and '90 as a city commissioner, involved in census, and 2000 census for the city, and now 2010 for the county. And I'm very excited about that because it's a different model. But we, you appointed your committee and we began working in October. So while we've not been before you, we've been working on this process since October of 2009. And so we've distributed census orientation information to committee members. We've met with outreach organizations. We've reviewed the questionnaire and you have a copy of that in your packet and the census timeline. We've met with census officials, both regionally, or I should say locally and regionally, and have them here in this building downstairs. That was entertaining. Commissioner Benavides was present for that event. Boy, that was something. And on and on. We've met with census committee representatives from Harlingen and Brownsville and others and hence we've developed a plan. And unless you have questions about the questionnaire, I won't know if you've ever, if you actually have seen it for 2010, there are only 10 questions unlike the past. But I'm planning to read those to you, go over those, and those you have questions about and they're interesting and we can develop all kinds of conspiracy theories about why they're asking those questions. But if you go to what in your packet is called Census Awareness Plan, Section 6, this is probably the meat of it, and you have allotted a budget, a generous budget, I believe, of about $35,000 or so, and we plan to utilize that where appropriate and return to you that which is not used. We have the benefit of the fact that there's a major census initiative and so while we don't have to buy, your committee, the Cameron County, doesn't have to buy PSAs. The census has already begun, PSAs and other organizations are doing PSAs on television and radio. And we believe, to answer your questions, we believe that our money is best spent touching people and reaching out to people. And I'll tell you about how we plan to do that. And so we are, we are developing, and it's in your packet here, a flyer, very simple flyer, in English and Spanish. Remember, we're not, while maybe theoretically, we are also, we want to be sure people are counted in Brownsville and in Harlingen and the urban center or something, et cetera and so forth. The reality is that we need to reach out to, as I said, hard-to-count people. And so we will utilize, we will utilize a system, a network, which is already well-established in our county of schools and school districts, of clinics, of community organizations, of outreach, of food banks, and other places where people go, and put those, that document into their hand. There is a force that's pushing back against us and I know that as you listen to your radio and you read the news, there are those out there who, and especially here on the border, who would have people not complete their census form and that's tragic. And we're trying to get the message across, if we can get the message across, for example, to children who will take the form home to mother and father, and if we can educate teenagers... to children who will take the form home to mother and father, and if we can educate teachers to explain to children, schoolchildren, how important it is that their parents fill out when they get it, if they get it, and if they don't get it, to report that to us so we can be sure that the census folks go to that rural area, then we will be counting those people, okay? And you know, there will be, you know, on a limited basis, where appropriate, you know, presentations to clubs and organizations, but really, that's the icing. I mean, that's not really where this committee, I think, needs to work. Utility-accompany billing statements, the county website, coordination with local governments and organizations, NGOs and so forth. So, that is our plan, I think that it is well-organized. I want to thank, I saw I'm in the building this morning, Juan, our friend Juan Montoya assisted us in designing this draft. Clearly, it should carry the logo of the county and the census, and that will be coming. It will be very simple, black and white, it will be in English and Spanish, it will be understandable, and we plan to spend our precious dollars making, just printing up internally, as many thousands of these as we can and getting them out across our county, all right?
Can we print them double-sided?
Yes, sir, double-sided.
One paper?
One page.
Okay.
Yes, sir, absolutely, absolutely.
And I have one other question.
Of course.
Is there a reason why, or is it a legal issue or what, that we don't include churches?
Yeah, that was going to be my question.
No. I mean, like...
To distribute.
Well, I don't, I think that's an oversight.
Because like church bulletins, every Sunday you're like...
No, we do include churches, that's an oversight, I apologize for that now, being on here, they've been discussed, we've talked to folks from church organizations, both Valley Interfaith, the Catholic Church, evangelical churches, because they're out there in some of these rural areas.
Right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, that was going to be my question, and I think you knew that I had a question, but I was trying to let you finish your, that the churches are very, very critical in getting involved, and not only the organizations for the various churches, but also the preachers and the ministers and so on. And if there's one place that people in the rural areas, if they don't have a car, they'll try and get a ride or whatever, at least I see that in my precinct, they're going to get to church.
You're exactly correct, and thank you for that. That's an oversight on our part. We have discussed it, but it didn't get on the, I'm going to beat up Frank over that, okay?
You have our permission.
Okay, thank you. No, no, that's absolutely, that's absolutely. We need to maximize the use of what the networks that exist out there, and of course, the church network is one of the most profoundly developed. And I want to also mention, give thanks to Yvette Salinas in your health department, our health department, because she's gotten out and her clinics and the health department are ahead of the curve and been very proactive, and they've developed a number, some materials as well, and so we'll be coordinating with them, we thank them. So, that's the, this is the purpose, I think, I've come right to the edge of what I need to say in utilization of your time. I wanted you, in summary, to know that we were out there working, we worked through the holidays, we developed a plan, we searched online across the country, I did this personally to find out what other communities and counties were doing, we emulated, and we took into consideration the unique characteristics of Cameron County and other border counties, and I believe we'll be ready, we'll be ready to go on census day.
Dr. Zorbaletta, I think, I'm sorry, I think you mentioned that, of course, you'll be working through the schools, but I think it'll be really important, the process you use in motivating the school districts.
You're right.
It has to start at the top.
That's right.
And teachers have to be made very much aware and motivated that this is important, because they have a million things to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And they might just ignore that one thing or just hand it to the child, but if, you know, at that age, especially in elementary, I know, kids will do, most of the time, motivated by a teacher, will bug the parents until they do it. And I think there's various ways to motivate the teachers, maybe have a pizza party for the first class that brings back all the forms, you know, there's various ways that they can be motivated.
Sure.
I think, I mean, it's critical, I agree with you, this time we've got to do a better job.
Your point, Commissioner Tamayo, is very well-taken. Fortunately, we have a good, very good working relationship with all of the superintendents in Cameron County and most of the elected board members. And you're right, we need to start at the top, we need to make these personal appearances, and we welcome any of you that could do that with us into La Feria and Rio Hondo and so forth, board meetings, just to present it and to have them sign on so that their principals know and teachers know that this is important. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Zorbaletta, I know that I had a conversation the other day after a presentation Mr. Peña made, and we were talking about this really historically undercounted colonial areas that you pointed out, and he indicated that they're getting pretty good response from people who want to work in the census from the colonial areas, which should help us a lot, I would think.
I hope so.
You weren't too far off, doctor, when you talked about referring to the 335,000 as students, because I think what we're going to find is that our population in Cameron County is a very young population. I would eventually say that probably over 50 percent of the folks who be counted are of school age. If you just go to Brownsville alone, it's got 40,000 plus just in the public school system alone. The message that we, I've done several PSAs on radio and one on TV, and the message is, you know, 10 minutes of your time will define Cameron County's future for the next 10 years. And that's the message that we must continue to, you know, to do. It is time, you know, but people need to find the time to fill out the, and I know it'll sit on someone's kitchen table for two or three months or put on the back shelf, but whatever our office can do or the commissioners can do and I can do, just call upon us.
Thank you.
And we'll do whatever it needs to do, if we need to go out and speak to groups, we'll be more than happy to, you know, English or Spanish, you know, I can do both, and just let me know what is that we can do for you to help you in making sure that everyone gets counted.
We will not hesitate.
Please don't, please don't.
If I may come back to Commissioner Wood's comment that made by, you know, realistically, the official census government agency can only hire so many people, and it's not that many. One of the first battles we had out of the chute for the 2010 census, and Judge Coscos was kind enough to join me in writing a letter to Congressman Ortiz complaining about the fact that we do not have an official census office, but it may be on the county law, and, you know, the majority of the county is to the east, and we don't have an office in this congressional district, and we've got two over in the next door congressional district, and we thought that that was placing us at a disadvantage, I mean, although I don't, you know, I don't believe in disadvantage, but that, we felt that that was not right, and we went on record letting them know that that's not right. But the, they'll hire as many people as they can, but the reality is that...
It's never going to be enough.
Volunteers are going to have to...
No, we have to do it, we have to do it, and we shall.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it, doctor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity to come to this beautiful building and speak to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I'm ready to help you in my precinct at any time.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I have a motion to acknowledge Dr. Zorbaletta's presentation by Commissioner Tamayo and by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Consent items?
Any member of the court wish to take out any item and discuss separately? I would like to take out all the items referencing the interlocal agreements on the recovery funds, just so the public understand what we're doing. Item AA, BB, BC, BD, E, EG, EG, G. I'd also like to take out item K. I believe that's all that I have for now.
Judge, can you take out, can you table item J, please?
Item J shall be tabled.
Item B and item R tabled.
Hold on, hold on.
B or R?
B as in boy. Item B and item R tabled. Item Y, the dates are March 10th and 11th.
Double Y?
Yes.
March 10th through what?
11th.
Okay.
Okay. Any other items?
Judge, I have G as in goat.
G?
V as in victor. X.
Okay.
Y.
Okay.
What was after G? Or B?
JJ?
Okay.
I guess you got KK, right?
You said B, right? B like in very?
That's it.
Anything else? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve all the consent items with the exception of those that we have decided to either table or take out to discuss separately?
So...
Motion by Commissioner Goss and by Commissioner Tamayo, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. And that included the motion to table and to take out, okay. Start off with item G, consideration approval of transfer a seized 1995 Ford Bronco from Fund 900 to the Cameron County Council Precinct Number 1 General Fund.
My concern is, you know, the background on that was a shortage of funds for vehicle repairs, but we're looking at a vehicle that's 15 years old that's being placed in service.
Mine's a 94, Judge, Commissioner.
Well, yours needs vehicle repairs, okay? I saw you driving the other day. So, you know, I mean, how do we benefit by placing a vehicle on the road that's a 15-year-old vehicle?
It's true, it's 15 years old, but it's been looked over by many months, and it's good to go.
Speaking of Mike.
We have Spring Day coming up, that's a Ford V4 vehicle, it's in good shape. We just got another one taken off rotation, so we have nine deputies assigned to the beach right now, and only five vehicles.
Okay, so it's like a beach vehicle, basically, that you're going to be, okay?
First Spring Day that's coming up, we need them.
How many miles would have on it, do you know?
It's got quite a few, I'm not sure.
Well, if it goes to the drops of the beach, I guess, I don't have a problem.
I mean, I, you know, I, look, I mean, I mentioned this kind of kiddingly, but I drive a 94 Bronco that's got 200,000 miles on it, and it runs, I mean, it runs good, I mean, it's not fancy, but it...
It's in good shape and it runs good, and motor, air conditioner works, and my AM radio works, and that's about it, but...
And sometimes it starts.
And sometimes it starts, but it works.
Motion for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Goss, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item V, consideration approval of memorandum of understanding between the Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services and the University of Michigan School of Public Health for the Coordination of Public Health Experience.
Just a quick overview of you. Basically, what we're doing is, first thing I want to say, it's a win-win situation because we're not paying anything, okay? What the University of Michigan in Nanaber has offered to loan us some of their students to do some studies that will help in our case, risk communications issues, okay? They're coming down here...
What kind of issues?
Risk communications issues, okay? They're going to send us four students for approximately a week. We're in daily contact with them right now, already sending them information so they can help us with our project. They're also planning to send us an intern for the summer to help us during hurricane season, so they can learn a little bit more about how to respond to preparedness issues during hurricanes, because we're kind of unique as far as the rest of the United States. And again, like I said, we pay nothing, they send their students down here, the students come down to get grades, of course, our only, anything that we're offering them is that we allow their students to be here with us, okay? We are not teaching them anything, they're learning from us.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
That was it.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Goss and by Commissioner Tamayo, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item X, consideration approval to purchase the Internet Records Access from Outcase Management Software Company, Net Data, to utilize credit card payments for all transactions, including online and collections of the two justices of the peace courts in Harlingen?
Oh, they're here. My name is Dallas Osborne, I'm the marketing representative for Net Data, and we're here today to discuss the Internet Records Access application, which is part of the software that we have installed in Judge Wise and Judge Gonzalez's court. Before we do that, I'd like to recap the court on kind of how we got to this point and kind of Net Data's relationship with Cameron County the past two and a half years. In February of 2007, this court approved Net Data to be the software vendor for Judge Wise and Judge Gonzalez's precincts up in Harlingen, and additionally, to do the delinquent collections for those two courts. We've integrated those processes so that the software and the collections are now one program essentially, and Net Data really assists the courts, not when the cases go delinquent, but pretty much once they're entered into the system. On the 15th day, or the 10th day for Judge Wise and Judge Gonzalez, we mail out the courtesy notice for the county from our office in Sulfur Springs, so that saves the staff here locally from having to do that, we pick up the postage, all the mailing costs associated with that. So we're going to impact current collections that I think we have, based on those numbers. And then on the 61st day, when that case goes delinquent, that delinquent notice goes out on the 61st day, so there's no lag in sending a file to a delinquent vendor, we've kind of automated that process. So, what you see, we additionally file the cases to Omni so folks can't go renew their licenses without dealing with the court first and clearing up the case, and if it's an out-of-state violator, the NRVC process gets initiated as well. We handle all that remotely. So again, the applications were installed, the court approved in February of '07, we were installed in August of 2007. So if you see there on the spreadsheet, 2006 was the last year that Judge Wise and Judge Gonzalez were on that previous system. 2008 was the first full year they were on Net Data slash GHS for their software and collections, and I think the court will recognize there's been a dramatic increase in the collections percentages and overall dollar amounts. Both courts have increased collections in 2008 and 2009 by over half a million dollars each, that's a million dollars total. I think it's important for the court to recognize and remember that the cost of this system, software, training, annual maintenance, zero dollars. So we didn't charge Cameron County for any of this. It's been a marketing plan that we tried to do, and this is the only county we've done it, where we gave them everything to see if we could make the money on the back end, and it's been a, it's been a good relationship for, I think, all parties involved. So I wanted the court to have those numbers and to be able to recognize that I think we've done a really good job, and I certainly don't think that Net Data is 100% responsible for these numbers. Obviously, Judge Wise, Judge Gonzalez, and their staff have done a great job, but the numbers speak for themselves, so...
Well...
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. You know, I mean, the numbers are not totally reflective of your system, in my opinion, because we had a significant change of traffic violations occurring at a particular bridge in Cameron County that were shifted over into these courts.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
So a lot of that increase has occurred as a result of a large decrease in another court.
Absolutely, and again, I'm not here to say we're going to take 100% credit, I do think we've been a valuable tool. You'll notice there at the bottom, the delinquent notices we've sent, over 42,000 delinquent notices have been sent, 15,000, over 15,000 cases have been filed to Omni, so again, folks can't go renew their license without dealing with the court first, and we've sent out over 7,000 courtesy notices. So again, I'm not saying that Net Data is 100% responsible, but I think we've been a valuable tool.
Yeah.
I think Judge Wise and Judge Gonzalez would both echo that sentiment.
And so the ward officers, we have them for a while.
Is this as of, is this a calendar year number or a fiscal year number?
Calendar year, and that comes from, those numbers are from the OCA website, so, they've got a pretty cool tool on there where you can go search by precinct. We do business in 170 courts across the state, a lot of counties are facing combining precincts and/or eliminating them because of a lack of revenue, so in these tough economic times, I think it's impressive that these courts have been able to flourish, so. Onto what we're going to discuss, do you have any more questions, by the way, about the numbers?
The, I have a question of our audit, yeah.
You don't have to say that anyway.
I think that was one of the... We do have a funding source, which is a technology fund for this, right?
That's correct, yes.
And there's enough funds there for the governments.
Yes.
Thank you.
So to go ahead and discuss what's the agenda item, which is the Internet Records Access... Access application, that is a credit card application that we've developed that coincides with our software, and again, it's an integrated deal. Uh, currently, a lot of the JP courts here in Cameron County do process credit card payments, uh, but it's a standalone system, so the defendant goes online to a third-party site and kinda blindly enters in information, this is the court that I think I got my case in, this is the fine amount, this is the citation number, you kick plate, you, they click pay now, and the, and the payment essentially gets processed, well, there's a lot of errors that can happen there, but what this system does is it verifies all that. If I was to get a speeding ticket in Cameron County, which is not gonna happen, law-abiding, but if I was to get a speeding ticket in Cameron County, I could go online and pick the court, either Judge Wise or Judge Gonzalez, enter in my citation number or my last name and date of birth, and I'm gonna pull up my basic case information, I can view it, speeding fifty-five and a thirty-five, yo, two hundred dollars, uh, click a little box to enter the plea of either no contest or guilty, when I click pay now, it, it, it takes me to the Chase payment site, that again is hardcoded, so if I pay two hundred, if it's a two hundred dollar fine, I can't alter that amount and partial pay, so it's gonna hardcode that payment amount over, I pay the, I pay the citation, the process gets transa, uh, the process is transaction, and then I get a receipt from home, the money, the money goes into the appropriate account set up for the precinct, and then the, the fine amount is actually imported into the Net Data system, so the clerks, Pat, and the folks up in Harlingen simply have to go into the Net Data system and click the payments that are posted for the Internet Records Access batch posting payments. So it's an integrated system, as a defendant, you can't pay the wrong court, you can't pay the wrong fine amount, you can't pay the wrong citation number, the system won't allow it.
Who pays the, uh, the transaction fee?
The defendant.
Okay.
It's a, I think, it's a three percent transaction fee that's paid by the defendant. Um, as part of this deal, we also install card swipes in the office, so if folks come to the window and wanna pay, they can zap the card right there, um, and that populates into the Net Data system, the payment gets processed, they're out of, they're out of the way, so...
But that three percent is shared by Net Data and the processing?
Yes, yeah, we, we get a cut of that, Commissioner, but it's not, we're not making a killing on that by any means, um, so, and again, the cost of the system, it's five thousand dollars per precinct, that's a one-time fee, we pretty much handle everything, so we're looking at a ten thousand dollar, uh, pardon, ten thousand dollar, um, amount for both precincts, again, that's a one-time charge, we handle, and we'll get with Joe and Paul and the IT staff, put the links on the website, get it all implemented, and, uh, we can have it up and going in a month, so...
So that's not one time per year, it's one time per installation?
No, it's a one-time fee, yes, sir, that's exactly right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gottsa, same by Commissioner DeMayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries.
Thank you, Judge, thank you.
Thank you. Item Y, consideration authorization to execute agreement with TerraCon Consultant Sync for building condition assessment on the Sea Ranch Restaurant.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on the, the crossouts or the line-outs on the contract? For example, on the fifteen days, we use thirty, does that substitute thirty for the fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the thirty days on the invoice is the same thing?
That's correct.
So the side notes are the contract?
The con, right, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, I move to approve, just second.
Moved by Commissioner Gottsa, same by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. On the following ones, the ones I wanted to pull out, all have to do with, with interlocal agreements between various cities, La Feria, Los Fresnos, Primera...
And Drainage Districts.
San Benito, uh, Cameron County Drain District Number Three, East Rio Hondo Water Supply Corporation, uh, City of Port Isabel. My question, Frank, this is what we spoke about as far as us administering the, uh, these ORCA funds for, for the cities, I got, I received a call from, from the City of Combs, uh, wanting us to, to basically allow them to do their, and that's not on the agenda, and I don't know why they're not on here, but I guess 'cause they didn't provide an interlocal?
Uh, in, in our contract with the state, which is for just under eleven million dollars, there, there's nineteen projects identified, and, and, uh, some of those projects are inside, uh, jurisdictions, uh, controlled by municipalities or special districts, and because of that, the state requires us, the county as a grantee, to have an interlocal agreement with those entities in order for us to provide the services that are, uh, included in the contract. Now, at, in the beginning, uh, the court agreed, uh, that we would submit our application for funding to the state with the county as the administrator. Uh, some communities, uh, I know, I hadn't heard about Combs, but, uh, you and I met with La Feria one time, some communities have expressed an interest in, in doing their own administration, you know, in the beginning, and, and even now, you know, staff would recommend against that, uh, the county is, is responsible for, for the use of funds. Uh, we've had some difficulties with other communities in the past where we allowed them to administer funds that the county was responsible for, and in fact, we're still having problems closing those contracts out.
Okay.
Uh, but that's our position, I, I guess it would be a decision of the court if you wanted to do that, uh, I, I would, I do have to let you know that in our contract, it specifically says that we will self-administer, so you'd probably need to have a contract amendment to, to allow those communities that you want to...
Yeah, no, and I just want, I brought that up in the concept, in the context of these, because they wanted to do their own thing, and I told them I would get with you, and I would not support it if, if you're not gonna support it, so, uh...
We would recommend against it, no.
Okay, that's fine.
Now, in, in, in the interlocals that you have before you, uh, we need eleven interlocals, uh, we're, we're still missing four interlocals...
Yeah.
...that haven't come back to assigned, Combs is one of them.
Is Rio Hondo one of those?
Yes, uh...
Yeah, and Santa Rosa?
We're, we're missing Combs, we're missing, uh, the City of Rio Hondo, uh, the City of Santa Rosa, and, and you still have not gotten military water supply, although they did return, uh, their interlocals signed, uh, it just didn't come to us in time for your agenda item deadline, so that one, for, for sure, you'll see it in two weeks, the others hopefully also.
Okay, well, that's all I, I wanted to bring up, so do I hear a motion to approve items double A, double B, double C, double D, double E, double F, and double G?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gottsa, same by Commissioner DeMayo, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.